I'd like to call the meeting of the school committee of March 26, 2024, to open. If we could all stand for the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is great. All right. The, if anyone is here making a recording, please let me know by raising your hand and tell me who you are. And I got Gilda. Okay, great. Is there, oh, yep.
We're being telecast on Channel 8.
We're being telecast on Channel 8. Thank you, Mr. Weber. Is there anyone here for student advisory? No? No, okay, that's fine. So, public comment, moving right along. Members of the public are welcome to speak about items that are not on the agenda. Comments should be limited to two minutes in length. Due to open meeting law, the committee cannot act on public comment. For items on the agenda, the chair may accept comments from the public following the committee's discussion of an item. Additional comments and feedback can also be submitted by email to schoolcommittee@falmouth.k12.ma.us. Is anyone here for public comment? No? Okay. And no one there. Okay, great. So, I'd like to turn it over to, to Tim for the presentation of the Morse Pond highlights. Thank you.
Welcome, everybody. Thanks for having us and thanks for joining us here at Morse Pond. Got some great highlights. So, I have a group from 5th grade and a group from 6th grade that are excited to share kind of some small moments that you don't get an opportunity to see unless you're in the building. I have a group of 5th graders who had a grassroots kindness campaign, totally directed on their own. They approached me with a proposal, very formal, very organized with an idea they had. This is the kind of thing you get to experience as a principal, just the good stuff. Where they come up with great ideas, want to share it and want to, you know, enhance their school. And then I have a group of 6th graders with some curriculum to show you some projects they've worked on in the content areas in science and social studies. So, these have been up in classrooms and on display. And they're very proud of their work and they're very excited to have an audience to share with. So, I'm going to turn it over to the kids, we'll start with the grade 5. And their teachers are here too to introduce them, moral support.
Hi, I'm Molly Duffstil. These are our 5th grade friends. We have Kenzie, Rory, Carolyn, and Mayumi. And they're going to give you a project about their kindness project. And throughout the beginning of school, they have come together. They had this idea that, they thought that Morse Pond needed a way to show and represent kindness. They thought it was really important that people recognize small acts of kindness and people are noticed for the little small things that we do each day. So, I'm going to put up the presentation and then they will begin.
Thank you. Have difficult difficulties? Tell us who you are, who's who.
I'm Kenzie.
I'm Rory.
I'm Mayumi.
I'm Mayumi.
Hi, welcome.
Thanks for coming.
Carolyn, you want to tell them about the t-shirts you presented?
So, Kenzie made these t-shirts. Yeah, my stepson at school helped them too.
Can we find our t-shirts?
They're in our favorite colors.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Tonight, Mike, crew, and I will be talking about kindness and how our club works. And so, without further ado, let's.
I'm Kenzie Tucci and I'm the president of this club.
I'm Rory McLaughlin. I am the vice president.
I'm Kevlin Crispin. I'm a secretary.
I'm Mayumi Colony and I'm Trina.
Hi, we are regular kids fighting for kindness here at Morse Pond. We're right here now today, so.
Be kind.
Be kind to others. I know everyone says be kind to others, but you really should. We can't, we can't do something you don't, we can't make you do something you don't want to do, no matter how hard you try. If you choose to, if you choose to be kind, you can make a difference. You can't change the world by yourself, no matter how hard you try. This world is the way it is and it's like this, we're reading. I like the world. I wouldn't change it, but I would put a little more kindness in it. Come make a difference. You can make a difference. Even a small person can do kind things. You can do little things like give a smile or hold the door for someone. That's what kindness is all about. It's not about being a hero. It's not doing it for the praise. It's doing it for people who need kindness at that moment. How wonderful it is that nobody need wait a single moment before starting to improve the world. And frankly. If a teacher, student notices someone doing an act of kindness, there will be special cards that you can get to the upstander. On the front of the card, there will be space for you to write a small, nice note. On the back of the card, you can draw a picture or quote after you find, after you find that person and give it to them. You can do this anywhere, like at recess, in the hallway, during lunch, or in the classroom at a focal time. So, maybe here's some examples of what the cards are going to look like. This is what the front will look like. And then on the back, you can write like a quote, like you're out of this room. Like you can draw a picture and go with it. Like this one, out of this one. This one says sheet first off, even though you're already there. I just wanted to say, I just wanted to say that with like the sun set, so. No matter what happens in life, be good to people. Being good to people is a wonderful legacy to leave behind.
No act of kindness is.
No act of kindness is too small. The gift of kindness may start as a small ripple that over time can turn into a tidal wave affecting the lives of many. Heaven help.
It doesn't cost me anything to be kind, God ain't dead.
And then no act of kindness, no matter how small, every wasted, gather these kindnesss. Be kind. And then, thanks for listening and being kind. Thank you for your kindness.
I was really excited to get this proposal from our group here because this year at Morse Pond, we relaunched, or launched, I guess, I should say, having the Peace Builders message recited every day with our morning announcements. They were used to doing that in elementary school, K through 4. So, they came up as 5th graders, just right in the groove with that. Part of the Peace Builders program is that they have praise notes as a component of that program where you can recognize an act of kindness to a staff member, to another student, staff to staff, student to student, doesn't matter. And so, I was thinking of getting those notes ready as like the next phase of our launch. And then I have a group at my door with an even better idea of how to enhance it. So, kind of taking the idea of like, you've seen kindness rocks around. We have a little garden out in front of Morse Pond. You can add an illustration, something to make someone's day happy and recognize what they did. And so, we put that together with the notes. And then No Guff Week came up as well. So, it's all just tied right together. So, it was a wonderful opportunity to have student voice as part of the school. So, thanks again for coming, girl.
Thank you.
We have a group of 6th graders with some curriculum content to share with you in science and social studies.
That might be.
Jesus, Mrs. Anderson, Mrs. Ryan.
I'm Janet Ryan. And I teach social studies here at Morse Pond.
Katrina Harris, I teach math and science.
So, we have four students here with us. Two of them will be sharing a social studies project that they did. And two of them will be presenting the science fair project that they put together for the recent science fair.
So, this is Dell and Ashlyn. And they're going to talk to you about a project that we did earlier in the year. It's called Fantastic Falmouth. And essentially, in social studies, we were learning about the five themes of geography. And with that, the culminating project was to come up with a brochure called Fabulous Falmouth, where each side of the brochure incorporates the themes of geography. And these two girls did a remarkable job. And I just wanted them to share that with you.
Well, we're here to talk to you about the Fantastic Falmouth social studies assignment, which was based on five themes of geography, which are location, movement, region, place, and.
Human environment.
Yeah. And we were assigned to make a brochure based on these themes. And we like, we, you could, you had an option to make a brochure online, which she did that, and, or you could make it on paper, which was like handwritten. And we did like, you had to like write all of your things with a title and like paragraphs or like, we, some of us did bullet points. That's what I did.
Sure, for, when I did location, for human environment interaction, we had to list 10 things that we, you should bring if you visit Falmouth. And I did sunglasses, sunblock, a bathing suit, sandals, sun hat, raincoat for rainy days, tank tops slash short sleeve shirts, shorts, sweatshirts, and sneakers.
Well, this assignment was like based on like highlighting Falmouth and the good things that you could do if you visited. And I, for my movement, I said, if you are coming to Falmouth, you can get there by taking a plane, car, bus, and a train. If you're coming to Falmouth from a state, then I recommend taking a plane. And then I also stated rent and Uber. And I said, in Falmouth, you also have the option to rent by, rent, I mean that you can temporarily, rarely own a car to drive places. And. We also said like, for place, I did like, we said like, a lot of our favorite places in Falmouth and things we like to do and places we like to go. I said, I like to go to the beach in the summer. At the beach, you can make sandcastle, swim, relax, enjoy the amazing views. And you can also go to a lot of restaurants. My favorites are Shipwreck on Falmouth Heights, Aneho on Main Street, and Crab Apples, which is like a breakfast place. And it's also near a good playground, Goodwill.
I wrote that Old Silver Beach is a really fun place to visit. And so, it's on Main Street, so it has so many nice shops and bakeries.
If we promise not to mess them up when you pass them around?
Yeah.
I would love to see it.
Melissa?
Yes. You guys did a great job. And I really think that the Chamber of Commerce would be interested. Because perhaps they, some kind of collaborative effort where they could, they'd like to see them.
And Emma and Grace will be sharing their science fair.
Do you have any gummy bears?
So, we did a gummy bear experiment, which was basically, we put it, one gummy bear in a cup of water with regular water, sugar water and salt water. And we waited 24 hours to see like what would happen, like if it would change. So, we thought that the water one would, like the regular water one would stay the same. And the sugar one would grow and the salt one would dissolve a little bit.
After closing the experiment, we found that our hypothesis was partly correct and partly incorrect. We were correct about the part that the salt water gummy bear wouldn't grow and the sugar water one would. We weren't incorrect when, or we were incorrect when he says that the water gummy bear would stay the same. After doing some research, we found that the water gummy bear grew the most because of the water molecules movement that formed a solution called osmosis. And the fact that these two things had different concentration levels made the water gummy bear grow the most.
Pretty cool, huh? When they presented at the steam fair, they actually did have sample gummy bears as part of their presentation at the steam fair, which is a genius move. But just want to say how proud we are of our students here at Morse Pond. And having been an elementary school principal in the district and I've known some of, some of these students since they were five, to see how much they grow and learn their skills, their presentation skills, student leadership skills are on display here now. What seems like just a few short years having gone by. It's amazing the growth they make here at Falmouth. So, I'm very, very proud of our, our Ospreys and all the hard work they do here in school every day. Glad you could get a little peek into their world. So, thank you for having us.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Do you have any of those kindness notes yet?
I can show you like a, what a copy looks like. And if you visit some classrooms, I could, I was thinking of bringing some examples, but they're written for specific people. So, if they wanted to share them, they could. But they are, you notice teachers who perceive them have them up on their bulletin boards and they're all in their classroom space. So, I definitely. School council?
Yes.
Take a look.
No, I just, I thought maybe we could write.
Oh, you'd like to do some.
Because I think there's a few students who deserve some praise notes.
You'd like to fill some out?
Yeah.
I can get you that.
All right. Yeah, empty ones, not filled out ones.
Oh, yeah, good student example, sure.
Can I give a shout out to Molly too? She's a proud graduate of Falmouth High School.
Might have inspired some more future teachers who miss stuff still hopefully in the.
Yeah. It's so special to grow up and go to school at Falmouth and have amazing teachers and being able to pass it on to the future leaders of our community. It's so, so amazing, especially.
I have to say, I have two former students as school committee members right now. Yes. Well, thank you all.
Thank the parents for coming.
Sorry, Tom.
Morse Pond travel agent.
I know.
That's exciting.
Ryan? Ryan? Could you promote, could you promote Kitty Hendricks? Kitty Hendricks, could you please promote?
Moving on to the presentation and update from the Wampanoag tribe, we have Ms. Kitty Hendricks. Ms. Kitty Hendricks Miller. I knew I was, there was a hyphen and I was going to forget it. So, yeah, I know. My wife, I can't have to like. Anyway.
Hello. Hi.
Thanks for coming.
Oh.
Hi.
Hi, I'm sorry if I missed my spot earlier in my.
That's okay.
Yeah, so just a, just a quick update. Kitty Hendricks Miller and I'm Indian education coordinator for the education department at the Mashpee Wampanoag tribal offices. And I manage a grant and we have partnerships with Falmouth Public Schools. And we've just been enjoying our partnership. So, thank you, everyone. Joe, I have some updates. We just have it, just a few updates very quickly. An upcoming meeting. Actually, the public hearing for the Indian education grant is April 2nd. And that will be Zoom and in person. And that's going to be from 6:00 to 7:00. So, that's our public comment session where parents, staff, educators, administration can come learn more about our grant, how we can make it better to serve our students, our native students, and also the non-native community. And sharing professional development opportunities with different schools, school staff, staff and administration. And let me see what else we have here. We also have an upcoming meeting with our partnership, which I believe is April 23rd at 2:00. Our quarterly partnership, partnership meeting. And I believe that's about it for updates from our, from the education department.
That's exciting. Kitty, could you share the link of the Zoom, the public grant session?
Sure, I will do that. I'll send that to Sharon. I could do it tomorrow or the next day. And we also, I sent this ahead as well and I'm forgetting about our First Light TEK teacher workshop, which is, I think, I believe I sent the flyers out to this, all the admins. And that is going, the registration will open up on April 2nd. It's a three-day workshop, the 26th, 27th, and 28th of June. And that will be at Walklight Bay Estuary Research and Reserve. And there will be PDPs offered for that training workshop. And I can resend that if anybody would like more information. Like I said, the registration opens April 2nd. And the link for the workshop is on there. The link for the registration is on the save the date flyer.
Oh, thank you. I should also ask for the link to the partnership meeting as well. Was that Zoom also or was that just in person?
They have been in person in the past. I don't have that information.
That's all right.
Okay.
And that was 23rd?
Right.
Just so that we can get that word out. I have to tell you to send it to all of our teachers. Excellent. Okay, great. Terry has a question.
I, it's not a question, it's a comment, Kitty. I was in the 5th grade school in Mashpee last week and I was so impressed to see the signs around the school that were written in the Wampanoag language. I'm a language teacher and I have respect for that language. Took me forever just to piece it out. And I think you've given language courses before. So, if we can get a link for that, I'll pay or anything if I could go to one of those language courses. But I just think it was really very cool to see the signs that were in English and the Wampanoag language.
Right, yeah. Yeah, unfortunately, now our language courses are just for tribal members because we're trying to bring it back in a way where we must be the first speakers. So, we do have opportunities where we can set up language classes for each of the districts. You know, they could be Zoom sessions or in-person sessions. Right now, we have community language going on, mostly Zoom. But maybe we can work on some signage that we can post around the schools of Falmouth for some things. Yeah. Thanks for sharing that.
Great. Any other questions, comments? Okay, well, we thank you so much for your time, Kitty.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Information to us. And I look forward to seeing the, the emails come in for the, you know, the April 2nd public grant session and the 4/23 partnership meeting. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Good night, everyone. Have a nice evening. Peace konanaru.
All right, moving on to the presentation of Fine Arts. I see, I see Mr. Edwards in the background.
Hi, everyone.
Hi. Welcome.
Thank you. I was thinking while I was watching that 5th grade presentation about kindness, that I have to follow that act. Thank you, appreciate it. Thanks for inviting me. I have just a short presentation to highlight some of the Fine Arts program, K-12. And it just so happens that we're celebrating in the month of March, music in our schools, Youth Art Month, and theater in our schools. So, I'm going to focus on excellence and equity as it pertains to our work day to day. And I'll try to cover as much ground as I can. But I first want to say how proud I am of the Fine Arts staff and the people that work with our staff, like the parent organizations that help us out. And I want to thank our administrative team and you all for all of your continued support. We can't do it without you. Thank you very much. So, rather than, you know, going down a column of excellence and then equity, I'm just gonna, I'm going to throw a lot at you because there's a lot going on. And again, I'm K-12, so there was a lot of, lot, lot of ground to cover, as I said. So, I'll start by saying, T-Ticket 1st grade had their informants recently. And they performed to a packed house and a standing ovation. I was just thrilled to death to see that. They, they were so good. 3rd graders at T-Ticket learned how to use the sewing machine recently while studying about the quilters from the Gee's Band in Alabama. They made a collaborative quilt as well as a small individual collaged fabric piece with sewing accents. And I hope you get to see that in and around that building and for the art show. Two students represented North Falmouth Elementary School at the All-State Trouble Choir. And three students from Mullen Hall sung in the All-State Chorus on Saturday, March 23rd. Amazing. North Falmouth Elementary and East Falmouth Elementary's Catherine Fainley is the art teacher there. And Nissa Graff is the art teacher at East Falmouth, have been working on a team smart bowl this year, adding more choice in their class art time. Excuse me, art class. This includes creating different centers based on different art media, including drawing, collage, and clay so far, for kids to use this, these particular techniques during their studio time. To do this, they organize and label supplies in student-accessible drawers and bins. They teach other students how to use materials, how to set up the workspace, and how to clean up their supplies. I bet some of you would like to see that at home with your kids. But also how to decide, I would. But also how to design their projects. The students come to our class with their ideas or plan to collaborate with their peers on a self-designed project. This open studio time is in addition to the curriculum-based projects that we do every day. By the way, if I'm speaking too quick, just let me know. You're a big, little nervous, to be honest with you. District-wide, we exhibited a variety of student artwork and art teacher works at the Falmouth Art Center in the month of February. I hope you got to see that. And we have a bunch of photos that have gone out from various teachers and the student slides. It was amazing. 11 Lawrence Junior High students and three Falmouth High School students were accepted into the Junior Southeast Music Festival. Our students performed in the band, choir, and orchestra under the direction of a variety of people that come in from either college or other high schools or other districts. It was a great experience for all. Six Lawrence Art students will have their artwork exhibited at the Through Young Eyes exhibit, which is a Cape White art show at the Cape Cod Museum of Art. That's coming up. At All Choral Night last Wednesday, the concert choir sang a piece in, of music in Portuguese. And I'm going to try to say this right, forgive me. Se essa, ral, passe minha. And it's the first time in a long time that we've ever taken a piece completely in another language and presented it to the Falmouth community, which I was really proud of. Let's see, six Falmouth. Uh, let's see, uh, six Falmouth High School Art Students won 10 Scholastic Art Awards from the Massachusetts Association of Educators and, and the Arts, uh, and National Art Honor Society displayed Science-Connected Artwork for the 20th Year at the recent Science Fair. Pretty cool. Uh, All Bands Night and All Choral Night presented our program to over 1,000 community members in three languages and in a digital format using, uh, QR codes similar to many modern performance halls, uh, so as to recognize our part in being environmentally friendly and culturally responsive to our current communities. Uh, Cabaret Night featured our Falmouth High School Choral Program and partnered with Falmouth Theater Guild this last Saturday. Uh, this partnership may, uh, help to offer more performance opportunities to our students within the community, and could also help us to recruit serious talent from the theater community, so we're really excited. Uh, bear with me, getting there. 12 Falmouth High School Students were accepted into the Senior Southeast Music Festival. All Band Night featured over 200 instrumentalists, All Choral Night featured over 100 vocalists, grades 5 through 12. Uh, we started a music mentors program, uh, with the, uh, the guidance and complete management of Sarah Wheeler done at the Lawrence School. This program started at Falmouth High School, and now that we've, uh, transitioned her to the Lawrence School, she's continuing that work. Uh, this program meets every Wednesday afternoon at the Lawrence School from 2:45 to 4:00. Any music student who needs extra help with learning music, extra enrichment with learning advanced music, or just wants a friend to practice with or jam with, is invited to attend. Students who have also picked up a brand-new instrument for the first time have participated and are invited to participate in this program. Uh, anywhere from 2:00 to 5:00, Falmouth High School Music Students come every week, and anywhere from 2:00 to 12:00 Lawrence Students come weekly. Uh, students can take the Lawrence late bus, or they're picked up and by a parent or guardian, and some of them even walk. On March 17th, Falmouth High School Peck Band performed at the TD Garden for our Girls Hockey State Championships. I have not heard enough good about that, that was really great. I give Mr. Schneider, our new band director, a lot of credit, that was awesome. I was a little disappointed that they were playing music over our kids at the, you know, but we're gonna work on that.
Turn it down a little, but, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, uh, but Mr. Schneider, with his positive attitude, didn't even let it faze him, they just, they had a blast. Um, but we're gonna work on that, and I hope we have many more championships to come. On April 27th, we'll host the Evening of Jazz featuring the UMass Dartmouth Jazz Band at the Kunamesset. I hope you'll get to go. And I'm gonna wrap things up with just saying that our Falmouth High School Theater Company is looking forward to presenting Grease on May 3rd, 4th, and 5th. There are approximately 50 hard-working students involved in this production. Uh, I really hope that you're prepared to be blown away, they're amazing. How'd I do? I, it's a lot to cover, right, K-12, there's a lot going on. Does anybody have any questions? Sorry, it is on tape, Mary, yes.
And Lawrence School did a wonderful job on, with Annie over the weekend.
Oh, yes, they did, yes, they did. Uh, I'm so, so happy with, um, the, the, the program and the, the amount of kids that Victoria gets involved in that program, yeah, building sets, working with costumes, managing the whole show, it's really incredible. Uh, that's another exciting thing I think about our theater program as a whole, is that kids are being encouraged to not only participate on what you see onstage, but what you see behindstage. You know, the lights, the sounds, the camera, building the sets, working very closely with the, uh, the production crew from Falmouth Theater Guild, it's been quite partnership.
The opportunities for students where they can just kind of come and jam or practice and play with each other. Winning, where did you say that was?
So, that's at the Lawrence School, yeah, thank you, it's at the Lawrence School, and it, uh, happens every Wednesday afternoon from 2:45 to 4:00. Thank you. You're welcome.
So, I just want to say that I've been, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just, wanted to say, based on All Bands Night in particular, but a lot of these, having had children who were instrumentalists in Morse Pond and Lawrence when the pandemic hit, and seeing the dramatic impact on the arts that the pandemic had, and then getting to All Bands Night this year, um, it didn't come back overnight, right? It's taken a, a lot of hard work, um, but it's really coming back, and we're really seeing it, and it's really wonderful.
Yeah, I think, thank you for pointing that out. Uh, I think it's, uh, really important to know how, uh, how challenging it was after the pandemic, but when you saw that performance that night, it was just an culmination of enthusiasm and motivation to take that challenge on and really build our program out again. You know, uh, I want to hand it to, uh, in particular, Mr. Boring, who's here at the Morse Pond School. Uh, the team said, you know what, we'd really like to do something different. Um, having experience trying to put grade 5 through 12, America the Beautiful, together without rehearsal, I, I can tell you, that itself is a challenge, but it was really great that the team wanted to try something new, and Tom wrote and arranged, uh, the version of 1812 that we heard at the end of the night, uh, for the team. They all, uh, came together, uh, in common planning and really worked together to make sure that that was a positive experience for kids and the audience, and I couldn't be happier. That was great.
I was just gonna say, I have participated myself in All Bands Night. My children have, uh, been participating in All Bands Night, and this year was hands-down the best All Bands Night I've ever seen. Um, I know I shared this with you before, but our son on the way home asked to put on the 1812 Overture over Apple Music on the way home, and he asks for it almost every time we're in the car. And that's pretty good for 14, so.
If they're gonna continue to do it, I might come back to you for a cannon.
True story. Not, not to focus entirely on, on music, although I also haven't gone to the, the art show at the Falmouth Art Center. I, I just am constantly floored by, um, the ambition, um, that our arts staff bring, and the, um, I don't know, the confidence and the expectations, um, for our students, right? They, they treat them like artists, um, and it's awesome to see, and there's some incredible talent.
And, and I think that, thank you, and I, I think that comes from the fact that they themselves are professional artists. So, every single, uh, staff member showcased their work, but selected five pieces from their students to be showcased with that, I just thought that was fabulous.
That was also awesome.
Yeah, that was really great.
Terry?
Um, I was thinking back to the summer when Henry went with, um, our student, we started off the year with the student in Washington D.C. Um, that was just remarkable. From, there's so many examples of art and music that fly in our district.
We, I, not to focus too much on the pandemic, but, you know, not only are we still standing, but now we're thriving, and I, and I think, again, that's a big credit to the people that are in it every day, all these art and music staff and theater staff, but also, again, thank you for your support. We couldn't do it without you, we really couldn't, and here we are, music and art and theater is very much alive in this town, and, uh, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you so much for coming, thank you for sharing, that was a lot. All right. Moving on to discussion of the Student Opportunity Act plans, please return to Dr. Ter.
Thank you, so, um, we have a plan due to, uh, Desi, uh, for the, um, uh, it's the Student Opportunity Act every three years, um, that, uh, is, uh, up again this year. So, I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Tellier to, uh, to tell you, um, or share with you, um, what we're focused on this time, and then we will, um, next meeting on April 8th, we'll bring it back, uh, for you to vote, because that's a requirement, uh, through Desi on this, uh, Student Opportunity Act Plan. So, Dr. Tellier.
Thank you. Um, so the plan has, uh, five sections that we're asked to, to work through, and Desi gives us really clear boundaries in which we can operate. Um, so, when, when they initially introduced the Student Opportunity Act, we focused on early literacy. And so, as we have this opportunity to renew, we want to continue to focus in part on literacy, um, bridging the gap between early literacy and getting into, uh, our elementary grades. Um, we want to be able to, uh, update our screener that we use, which is required. Uh, there's a component that's looking at whether or not students are at risk for having, or, um, having dyslexia, but also identifying students who are, um, needing support to accelerate towards grade-level learning and some of their foundational literacy skills, and I know we've shared some information about, uh, the work we're doing in literacy throughout the year. Um, and with that, we want to be able to also, um, evaluate and consider, uh, a new curriculum or core, uh, resource materials for, um, grades 1, 2, and 3. The number of requirements that are being layered in there for early literacy, and definitely to support students, um, who may be, uh, either, who may have dyslexia or may have, uh, skills that they need to really work to accelerate to get up to, um, the novel studies that they're doing in 4th grade, uh, being able to, to shore that up. Um, and then also, uh, along that way, also strengthen our use of the multi-tiered system of support, which allows us not only to look at students' academic needs around literacy skills or even the complement to their math skills with our new math program, but also, uh, allows us to attend to any social, emotional, and behavioral needs that students may need, um, support in, um, working through whatever that challenge is so that they can be ready to learn and to move forward in that. Um, one of the, uh, criteria above and beyond picking the subject and the area we want to focus on is also looking at our data, uh, as we've shared our NPAS and Accountability Data with you, and then, um, more recently, even looking, uh, head to advanced course enrollment in the way that the, the numbers are being impacted. Um, we identified, uh, our high-risk students or our high-need students as the group, um, on whom we want to put the spotlight, you know, in our work and really be able to progress-monitor how they, um, learn and can change throughout this process. Um, included in high needs are our students with disabilities and our multilingual students, and also, um, through the screener process, any student that would be identified as a higher risk. Um, in, um, in our work, I think, in particular this year, uh, we had a number of different spotlights on us, the tiered focus monitoring process, uh, yielded information, in particular, we just completed a round, uh, focused on multilingual students and multilingual programming. Um, we also, uh, went through the Title I Progress Monitoring, um, System this year, so, uh, we're expecting feedback from the Department of Education over the next few weeks, um, really focusing on that process, but also, you know, listening to the students in, in the superintendent's advisories, the coffee hours, um, thinking about information that we've brought in, um, through our LPAC family nights, but also thinking about, um, some of the early, uh, ideas or indicators that are coming from the equity audit process. I know we haven't quite gotten to the comprehensive results, but all of the different ways that we've been soliciting and gathering information and evaluating, um, our programs, also pointing back at the supports for our earliest learners. Um, so specifically, when we talk about the type parameters, um, there are five focus areas that we are connecting with in the Student Opportunity. The first is that idea of student well-being and making sure that our students have the support they need to be ready, uh, to engage in their learning. Uh, following that is the comprehensive tiered system of supports, which, uh, asks us to look at our data practices, how we monitor student growth, how we respond to that, uh, and the evidence that we use. And then, uh, the comprehensive approach to early literacy, which sort of has framed our work, and then collaborative teaching models, how we, um, have our students come together and make decisions and, and work through different student groupings to support in making some shifts, and then finally, attention to programming for our multilingual learners. So, they give us, uh, a, a menu of opportunities to pick from, and we wanted to, um, take in several of them that are all complements to each other to create a really comprehensive, uh, program for our students that also responds to the data and feedback that we've been receiving.
That was a lot. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
I, I, I just want to make sure that I have my head wrapped around this. So, this, these are the, the items that will be in the plan for how we're gonna spend Student Opportunity money? Is that right?
Okay, so if you remember, on our first year, um, we planned, Falmouth did not receive any money.
Right.
Still expected to, to, to deliver on the plan. Um, we are, um, scheduled, I think, uh, and I don't want to get this wrong, is it 86? Or is it 6,000, I think?
Yeah.
We're slated to get, but if you remember, this money goes through the town.
Yes.
It's already been determined what we're getting, I don't know that we're gonna see additional funds at this point.
So, it's not, that's why I'm, I just want to make sure I understand. So, it's not that, that there's a set amount of money and we're deciding how we're gonna spend that to best meet these five things, it's just that.
We're expected to do these things, and we may or may not see money.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So, it's not like a typical, it's not like a grant that you write for, I mean, that's why, I mean, it's just a plan, they want to see a plan. It's not a grant we're writing, and then you justify, you know, the money that you're, you're spending, or required to have the plan as part of our. I mean, not, I don't know if I, I mean, not like you can add that, but that's. And I don't want to be negative, but it just seems like the state is like, here, do all these extra steps to already do what you're already doing, and we're not gonna give you anything for it. It's pretty much what it sounds like to come along with.
It, it, it is, and it isn't, I think, because, I mean, the, the, the components that we picked are the right things to do, right? It's the best practice, and we should be doing this. Um, they want, you know, so they want to hear that, you know, we're, we're selecting. There's a, there's actually a, a longer menu, right, to pick from, they're not saying that you have to do every, you know, all 15 things, but we're picking, and this is a comprehensive one, where you're looking at that early literacy. And it grows on the plan that you already approved for the first three years, right? Where we really concentrate on the real early literacy at preschool, kindergarten, and first grade, right? So, now, we're, we're kind of expanding on that, doing a needs assessment of what's gonna, you know, help, uh, support our students during those, you know, growing, growing through that. So, we would be doing this anyway, right?
I'm gonna be real honest, because it's the right thing to do.
Okay, yeah.
Is there, um, when you said there's 12 or 15, is there a minimum amount that we have to choose?
No.
No.
Okay.
So, we just are picking the ones that are intentional.
Just intentional.
It's positive to be with what they think is.
Yeah, what we should be doing next, yes.
They're, they're linked also to the processes that we're finishing up with the Department of Education, where they're giving us guidance, you know, to sort of directionally, like you should focus your energy here or consider this. So, at least it's all coordinated.
Okay, so, way to find that silver lining.
Well, I mean, if, if we're going through the process of developing the plan, at least we're able to use it to tie different pieces together, um, rather than feel like it's completely additional.
Okay, thank you, that's really helpful, I just want to make sure I understood.
Heather?
Um, just wanted to clarify one thing, I, I thought I heard you say something about assessing the need for or, or, um, looking at new curriculum.
Yeah, materials, so, in looking, um, so we have to meet the, the definition or the standard for high-quality instructional materials, so the Mass Department of Ed. So, in evaluating, we have, um, you know, a, a group of materials that they've pre-assessed, and then we can go within there and evaluate them for the fit, um, to what we might want in the district. And part of our evaluation is, you know, looking at the relationship between a screener and the materials, and then, uh, what do we already have? Um, so like, we have our phonics program for foundations. We would ideally, if we're gonna be making a shift, want a curriculum that would align with the use of foundations, because we've found that that's really helping to accelerate learning. Um, and some of the screeners now have the ability to do the screener and then create a personalized learning path for a student that goes into that curriculum, and some of them, it's just the screener, and then the curriculum's separate. So, we're trying to go through what Desi sort of pre-approved in their process to figure out what's a, a best match with our needs.
So, you're not talking about looking at a new literacy curriculum, but new materials or, or onramps?
Yeah, for grades 1 through 3, it could be a, a new curriculum, or it could be making some adjustments, um, to bring in some resources that connect, right, the screener and the phonics. I think that's the part we're trying to figure out, is fitting it in a good choice, right? The most, uh, impactful option for student outcomes, or is it too much of a trying to fit things together that may not go together?
Mike?
Is, um, if I could, through you, chair, um, is there reporting that has to get done to, to get the money? And then the second follow-up to that is, how much money, I think Dr. Dooley said 6,000 percent? I, I don't know, those two, go by two questions. Is there reporting, and do you need the reporting to get the money, and how much money could there possibly be?
There is reporting, yes, because one of the things that we have to do is we have to agree to follow, Desi sets benchmarks or targets every year for the amount of growth we're supposed to demonstrate in the LA and math. So, the reporting part is, is integrated in there. The issue is that we don't have a set allocation, so we're required to create the plan whether or not there's a, a dedicated allocation. And so, that was, that's, that's part of that give and take, um, that we have to create the plan even in the absence of knowing that there's an actual amount. So, in doing this, we wanted to make sure we, we were looking at things that we already have to do and finding a way to coordinate them, rather than feel like we were doing something else and then finding out that there'd be no additional.
And then what would the, what would the maximum amount of funding be?
We, we don't know, because they haven't.
It's a formula from the state, so every, every year, it looks a little bit differently. It's, it's, it's part of Chapter 70 dollars that actually flow, come from the state, flow through the town. through the town to us. So when we gave the budget presentation and we talked about the chapter 70, you know, we break it out and share what that is, you know, but it is a part of our, our budget that you vote on every year.
Ballpark.
So I, I don't know, somewhere between 16,000 and 80,000 for this year. But we won't necessarily see an additional, because it flows through the town and our budget's already set, I don't know that we're going to see an additional, whatever it is, 60,000, 80,000, whatever that, that amount is. I don't know that we're going to have an additional on top of our budget.
And then, I have one more question, I'll be done, if I could. If it's 60,000, 80,000, and I know that Heather just talked about or mentioned possible changing of curriculum, would that also, like, would that money hypothetically cover a change of possible curriculum from grades one, two, three?
Only if we saw that increase, which we're not guaranteed to see.
But it still would never, if we needed to purchase a new curriculum, that would never cost, that would never cover the cost of a curriculum, which is the, the school choice dollars. We use, the two major areas for spending is new curriculum, continued curriculum materials to support the curriculum. Like, so when we, with the iReady Math that we have from, you know, K through eight, that came out of school choice money. So if we didn't have that, that, and that was around between 500 and 600,000.
Okay.
Okay, for that curriculum. If, if we didn't have, that, that would be a, another pressure on our budget if we had to have it in a, somewhere in our budget line of our local dollars. So, and then the other piece is the, the technology. So the ongoing technology for staff and students comes out of school choice dollars as well. So we're lucky to have those dollars and lucky to be able to not, not have to use a budget to select materials, but really to look at what the best materials are possible for our students. And we have, and we have the money to support that. So if we were to purchase a curriculum, you know, I have no idea what that might be, but if we were a complete new curriculum, it would be a lot more than that. But we're committed to that. I think that's the point about the plan. We're committed to the plan because it's what's best for kids.
Okay. Okay, that's fine.
Margaret, did you have a question?
No, that's okay.
Are you sure?
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. We will be voting on this on April 8th, so any further questions, you can direct to Dr. Tellier or Dr. Dur. Okay. Moving on to the second read and act of policies DD and KCD, and they are on the next few pages of your packet. Policy DD is funding proposals and applications and policy KCD is public gifts to the schools. I'll turn it over to Mary.
Yes, we discussed these last time. They're pretty straightforward. They deal with gifts and grants to the school that require school committee approval if they are for educational purposes and prior to the gift or grant being expended or used. And we did not receive any additional across the teams since the last meeting.
No, correct.
Not.
Okay. Is there a motion? Okay, thank you, Mike. Is there a second? Thank you, Terry. Any further discussion from the committee? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Great. Excellent. Thank you all. Next, we'll be moving on to discussing and acting on the naming of the Fama High School tennis courts. Dr. Dur, do you want to?
Just kidding. So after our last meeting, we had, the last I counted was 68 emails. I would say all in favor except one had a really interesting point of all in favor of naming the new Fama High School tennis courts in favor of Mr. Jack Reardon. One wasn't necessarily not in favor of, but really had a different spin on things, which was to perhaps have like an honorary bench or a rock or.
Plaque.
A plaque of some sort, which I thought was interesting. So at our last meeting, we asked for, the overwhelming request was to get more information from the public. We did our due diligence. Again, we had 60-plus emails from the public as well as, I'm sure, unlike myself, I'm sure other people had community members approach them. And I haven't heard otherwise that there were any oppositional emails against it. And we also were asked to bring it back to the policy subcommittee. We did meet, the policy subcommittee did meet yesterday, and although it was not a unanimous decision, but no changes were made in the policy for naming the facilities, which was policy FF for those, everybody keeping in check with what policy we're speaking of. So the policy subcommittee did their due diligence. We followed the policy, putting this forward. This has been on our radar since last fall. So is there a motion?
So.
Ooh.
Wow.
I'll second Sue's motion.
All right, Mrs. Augusta and Mr. Halen, is there any discussion? Thank you, Terry.
I think it's important to bring out that people, somebody mentioned the process going forward and we're confident, the budget, or the budget, the policy subcommittee is confident that it does have a good, solid policy for going forward for another time that this would come up. So it wasn't just this one instance, but it seems like a good policy in general going forward.
Any other discussion? Please.
Yeah, I'd just like to make a comment that, you know, in order to be successful, it requires a lot of things, but two things that it requires is understanding where you came from and where you want to go. And the other thing is understanding who paved the way for you to get to where you are right now. And after everything that I've read and the feedback that we've gotten, I think it's very clear that this individual, Mr. Reardon, I didn't know, I had, I didn't go to high school here, but I had a tennis coach that, you know, I loved. And if I had a chance to vote to name the tennis courts after him back at my high school, I'd be jumping all over it because I know that he paved the way for me to love the sport, to learn more about the sport and a whole lot of other lessons outside of the sport. And I just wanted to throw that out there, that if we want people in our town to be successful, we also have to recognize the folks who paved the way for them to be there.
Thank you, Bill. Any further discussion?
I just, I, I was one of the main objectors to the, to the conversation early on and, you know, I still feel strongly that I don't want to name, I don't want to vote to name facilities in honor of people, but there's no question that Mr. Reardon was like an extraordinary man. And I have loved every email that we've gotten and all these wonderful stories about the impact that he had on so many people. And since I know abstaining is last, so I'm not going to get to say it then. So I wanted to just say, you know, I can't vote against him, that I just could never do that, but I also like personally can't vote for it. So just wanted to get my, get my two cents in before you call the vote.
Sure. I've also enjoyed reading the emails, taking a walk down memory lane at times, and I had Mr. Reardon as a teacher and I was here when he was an athletic director. He did a lot for a lot, not just tennis, but he did a lot for a lot. So if there's no further discussion, Heather?
Yeah, I'll just say, I think it was one email that was not in favor of naming the tennis courts, period. And that one email was representing a larger group, right? And that's our, our current tennis players who had a discussion and really felt that they wanted an opportunity to honor more than one individual and not just honor one person, understanding that we stand on the shoulders of a lot of people and that that list will grow over time. And I thought that was a really thoughtful response. And yeah, I think.
I think it was absolutely a thoughtful response. And my response to that, I think that another committee member, and I spoke of this, was we're not going to have another Mr. Reardon, but there's definitely room at the table to have perhaps a plaque or a bench or a, you know, a rock or a something to acknowledge other greats to come, but we're never going to have another Mr. Reardon. So I do appreciate that email. I know that that email represented other people and I hear that. So that's great. Margaret?
Yeah, I was very impressed with the multiple emails that I read about this person. I too did not know Mr. Reardon. And it was wonderful to see so many people supporting him. The one thing I want to say about the other email is sometimes names of buildings change over time, but a bench or something else doesn't. And in time, we don't know what's going to happen. So I do think that if you really want to honor someone over, over time, beyond our time, beyond many people's time, you want to think of something that will never change. And so I was very impressed with the signal. And I was very impressed with all the emails about this person. There's no way that I ever have anything against him. I only wanted to make sure that the community, this is what the community wanted. But I think it would be thoughtful to think about when we name, naming things change, but benches and memorials last forever.
All right, let's vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Okay, great, excellent. Moving on to acting on the MasterChef job description. I'm going to turn that over to Dr. Dur.
Thank you. I just wanted to reiterate a couple of things from the last meeting, just to be clear. The funds for this position are out of the food service department. I can, we cannot use the funds for any other position unless it's directly related to the food service. So this is an account that, you know, pays for our food service workers, our, our director and the, and then hopefully the chef. And also equipment for that, for any of our kitchens and any kind of related items like the cafeteria tables per se. So, and then, and we need to fix certain things, right? So, and that's kind of the plan for that money. That money is outside of our budget and it can't be used for teachers or teaching assistants, nurses, counselors, you know, so it's, it's a completely different fund and not part of our budget that you vote on. So I just wanted to make clear where the money was coming from and how it can be used. And then I don't know that I mentioned before, but this would be a non-union position and the, our food service workers are all in the union. They're in their, their union. So this would be a non-union position. And so I, if any other questions, I'm happy to answer or, yeah, talk about.
If there are things that are broken currently, I know last time we thought everything was fixed, but if there are things that are broken or the things that are broken, will they be mended in a timely manner or?
That is, that, I mean, that's always the hope. Yeah, so I don't, the few things that I, that I brought to my attention, I don't see why that it would be any issue in short order to be able to.
Okay.
I can give you an update on that after I talk to.
And we could encourage also reaching out through the proper channels if there were anything else broken in food service to reach out and make sure that those things get mended.
I can assure you that as soon as Paul Dart hears about it, I think he'll be in every kitchen within a week. How's that figured out?
That's great. Yes, Bill?
Do we have to put a motion on the table before we can talk about it?
We should. Thank you, Terry. Is there a motion? Thank you, Kelly. Is there a second?
Second.
Great. Okay. Discussion, Bill. Thank you.
All right. So I was looking through the job description. We still don't have, we still, we don't know if this is going to be a full-time or part-time position.
I think because this is so new, I think it's a really good question, but I think because it's so new, I want to see who applies and figure out whether this is a full-time job for someone. I mean, we don't, I don't, I have no idea how many people are going to apply. Hopefully, there's going to be people applying, right? And I just, I guess I want to leave it flexible. Would my first choice be to have a full-time person? Absolutely. If we can't have a full-time person, I don't want to lose the opportunity and what it means for, you know, for our students, right? Because someone might not be able to meet that.
So, but right now tonight, then, we're being asked to approve a position that could be a $40,000 position, it could be a $140,000 position. We don't know, do we?
So last time when you asked, I gave the range between 65 and 90. This is what my understanding is, would be the, the range 90,000 being a full-time, 65,000 if it was a part-time position. And that's, that's comparable to other districts that have hired, you know, a 30 to 40-hour, 10-month or someone that's a full-time. So that's, I'm going in that, that range. Could it be 92? Could be, you know, if you remember.
But then the 90,000 dollar position, if that was full-time, that would, we would also have to add in benefits to that, correct?
Anything over 50% is benefits.
But we don't pay that.
No, we don't pay that.
We don't. That's right.
The town does.
The town does.
So it would cost the town additional money if it was a full-time position?
Yes, fully.
Okay. I just, I guess where I'm struggling, and I know I had some questions just about the position in the past and making sure that, you know, we didn't have all this extra money sitting around because, you know, if you ask a student about the food in the cafeteria, they're going to tell you it's, you know, horrible, not enough, whatever. So I, I asked the questions last time just to make sure that we didn't have a surplus of money because we were not spending as much as we could have on the food, on the quality of the food. And I understand having someone who's a certified chef that understands how to make the most out of every dollar you have while also making the highest quality food, I, I get that premise. I just, I guess where I'm struggling is that, again, we, we're being asked to approve a position and it's just kind of up in the air as to, well, it kind of depends. Where I would feel much more comfortable if, let's say we put this as a, as a full-time position, but we didn't have enough applicants as full-timers, but we had some folks came in and said, man, if this was a part-time thing, I could do it. I would feel better about approving it one way or the other than to just leave it almost kind of like a blank check. That's just kind of the way I feel is that with it being wide open and we don't really know, I have a hard time saying yes to something that much I'm concerned.
So can I, I'm sorry, Kelly, go ahead.
Yeah, so I mean, I don't know if this will help at all, but, because that's usually the kind of stuff that really bothers me and I was trying to figure out why it doesn't bother me for this. And I think it's because it's, it's a chef job and like the restaurant industry is so completely different than so many other industries. And so I think that that's what's making this easier in my mind to be more flexible because the restaurant industry is crazy here in the summer, but very light in the winter, depending on where you work. You might be closed. And, and so that's, I think, I think it's allowing greater flexibility in my brain for what this might look like because it's a restaurant sort of tangential kind of job. But I don't know, that might not be the reason that it ended up like this, but I throw it out there. It's acceptable.
Terry?
I've been thinking a lot about this position because it's new and I wrote down some things. I have a bunch of points and I wrote them down so that I would say them and I'm already not starting saying them. So I think that we should put the, put the brakes on this position right now because, I mean, I know Lori said that we had to spend the money down, but I also asked, asked the last meeting and we just have to be saying that we are trying, looking at ways to do it and our agenda should be proof of that because it's on our agenda being discussed. So I think maybe if we could just slow down a little bit and I'm. And I'm also going to mention that at the last meeting, Kelly said that we hadn't had a presentation in a long time about our food service in general. So it would be good if we had a presentation in general, and we could see, because the food chef isn't just a chef, it's part of our overall food service, and how would that fit into what we do? For example, if we have free lunch, but if the chef makes things, do we have to pay, do the students have to pay for that? And can everybody afford to pay for it? And where's the money going to come from to cover the things that the chef will produce in collaboration with our free lunch program? Another thing is, we heard that some service, our food service employees were on board with the idea. But I think we should be sensitive that right now is negotiations for them. And maybe they're timid to give a lot of input about it. So that's just something, and maybe slowing down the process. There used to be a baker who did things from scratch. It was a position in the food service, and it was eliminated. So they did things, like I said, from scratch. So maybe we could bring it back and expand it on that, and then it wouldn't really be a new position. It would be part of the old positions that were there. I also think that we should float the idea with the stakeholders, who are the students and the parents. And if you guys remember, not too long, on social media, there were hundreds, and I'm not exaggerating, there were hundreds of comments about the quantity and the quality of it. And sometimes, the food service is short-staffed. And I looked on our Human Resources page, and it said that we need some subs right now, and they're in that department, and they only pay $15 an hour, which is minimum wage. So maybe if we just upped it to 17 or 20 dollars, it would help it out, and maybe we could use some of that extra money to do that. You already discussed about making sure the equipment in the kitchens is up to date. And also, you said that this has to be related to the food service program. Well, we already use stuff from the greenhouse. We get lettuce from them, we got radishes that were talked about. So could we get a price on building a second greenhouse that maybe had heat in the winter, so we could get even more produce? So could we get that before we made a decision about the role? I'm not, I think the chef thing is great. I don't sound like I do. I think it's a great idea. But I think we really need to figure out how it fits into what we have. And maybe if we started with a presentation on what our food service is. So I would just say maybe put the brakes on voting on this tonight.
Go ahead. Yeah, well, I have some of the answers to the questions, and so thank you for asking that. So, one, we still have to follow the federal guidelines on the food amounts, right? And so, and free lunch is free lunch. So as long as we're following the guidelines, right, there's no cost to students. It is a free lunch, it's free breakfast, it's a free meal program. So there's no additional cost, no matter what the chef is preparing. We are increasing.
But where do we get the ingredients for that? Don't we have to pay for the ingredients?
Of course, we have to pay for the ingredients, whether we buy from a vendor that's a prepackaged product, or if we're buying local fruits and vegetables. You know, we're purchasing that. And remember, we have the extra dollars that come in to actually be able to have an opportunity to buy local, and to buy fresh, and to be able to prepare scratch. So that portion, you know, we're concerned. We're also, we're, we've increased the number of staff. We know that it's going to take more time to prepare for scratch, to learn new menus. So we're increasing the actual food service staff in every single building. And yes, I agree with you that the substitutes, that the pay is low. And we are addressing that as well as, and I cannot speak to at this moment, because we are in the middle of negotiations. You know, and we're, you know, hopefully, offering a package that will be appreciated. And, you know, well thought out, well thought, that piece of it. And kind of, if I can answer one of Bill's questions. So, right now, if you, like, so, I'm just going to use chicken nuggets, okay? So if you, following the guidelines, if you get four nuggets, right? If you back, we can't double that, even though we would have the funds to double that and make it eight nuggets. We can't do it because it doesn't. But if you, if you use fresh fruits and vegetables, there's lots of room to grow and offer more on the plate. If you follow how much, you know, fats, how much, you know, proteins, how much, you know, and fruits and vegetables are wide open, right? And so if you're cooking more with fresh items like that, and healthy items, there's more room to have more on the plate. So it's, it's not that we don't want to get more, it's that there's a guideline about what you can put on the plate, especially when you're doing prepackaged.
So we are recognizing that four chicken nuggets, for a 210 La Crosse player, is not enough.
We do recognize that.
And what can we do immediately, like tomorrow, to fix it? Because we don't want our kids hungry. And we're, you know, we have free reduced lunch. And there's, there's, there's a lot. There's a lot to be desired. It's, I don't want to look a gift horse in the mouth, and I don't want to sound selfish on it, but there are things there that could be fixed. And this is a completely off tangent side note, not related to this Master Chef position. But I feel like there are things that are broken.
But I think, I think they are related. Because how, how are we going to know what other things to put on the plate with the chicken nuggets, if we don't have a professional who can guide that?
Well, our food service can look at 210 and be like, okay, that's not, that's like a bite. That's not even.
Right, but if they're buying prepackaged stuff from Cisco, there's nothing they can do to supplement that. We need a chef to figure that out.
What about fresh chicken, instead of the, you know?
Sure, I don't, I, I'm sure they don't care what it is. I just want to make sure that.
Life is chippy without a chef.
But they have to know how to cook it.
Somebody has to.
And I also want to be careful what we're putting on our current staff, and the expectations of that.
Margaret?
Well, if we're concerned about the quality of food that students are going to get, it would seem as if having a chef that develops menus, and gives those menus to the population we're dealing with, is very important. And it certainly supersedes prepackaged food that the staff has to do now, although there may be some fresh fruits and vegetables, because that's what we have. And so if we're talking about caring about students and what they're eating, I'm having a hard time not understanding how we would not support this person.
So I don't, I just want to advocate for food service here for a minute, that, and I am not, not advocating for the Master Chef position, but I can't sit back and not acknowledge our amazing food service that are making things from scratch today, and that are, you know, crushing it, and, you know, doing more with less, and using, you know, leftovers from X, Y, and Z to make this and that tomorrow, that's going to fill the bellies and stay in the guidelines. And I, I just, I want to make sure that they are recognized for the amazingness that they are doing. And I would hope that this Master Chef would enhance.
Yeah, absolutely.
Their, like, to, to repeat what I said before, to, you know, have more at the table. So having the Master Chef at the table, enhancing what our amazing food service is doing. And hopefully, our kids not walking away hungry. Mike and then Margaret.
I had a couple of questions, or more point than a question. I do agree with Bill's point about the, there's no, there's no salary, or, we don't know if it's full-time or part-time, or even the months, because you had discussed whether it be seasonal or year-round. And that is somewhat concerning when you say the blank check thing. But I had a question, I don't know if it's for you, Dr. Dore, I think Heather asked last meeting. Oh, actually, it might be for Dr. Woodward. The students during the summertime are not currently getting free lunches.
That's great.
So I'm not against the Master Chef, but when I was talking to people in the community, the size is a big thing, I understand that's regulated. But I would much rather see students in need in the summertime getting some food than, than this particular thing to begin with. And I think that Terry, the pause, I would like a pause on this, just so we can see what our needs are. Because I think that is a larger need for students in the summertime who might be hungry than this currently, without knowing the information, so, that's it.
Heather? Well, first of all, it wasn't me that asked that question. But it's an awesome, it was, it's an awesome question, and a great thing to follow up on. And I guess my, my one question is, is this an either-or situation? Can, with the amount of excess that we have, can we fund this position and continue exploring other ways to enhance food services with this surplus?
Absolutely. Bill?
Yeah, so just, just a clarifying question in regards to the salary. If we approve this position, and only a few, handful of qualified people, you know, apply, and they all want it full-time, and they're all, you know, asking for salaries in the range of $120,000. I'm not saying you would offer that, but is that something that would have to come back to us? Or is that something that as administration would be able to make a judgment call on?
So technically, what you're voting on is the job description. And because the food service budget is not a part of the school committee budget to vote on, then it's, that leeway is actually management.
So we would have no reporting?
It doesn't come from our budget. Margaret, sorry.
I know, I just wanted to clarify, you know, because I, I'm glad you said what you did about the present staff that works here, and in no way would I support this position. No, I just want to be quite clear. I've certainly been in, on tours, I've met the staff, I've been at, I've had lunch at one of the schools, and the staff work incredibly with what they have. And I think this will help the staff to do better. And that's why I support it.
Yeah, I think it's an enhancement effort.
Yes.
It's a good word, Alex.
I think this gives us an opportunity to do something unique. And again, the, even when we were charging for lunch, the lunch program is supposed to be self-sustaining. There's money there now, it gives us an opportunity to address so many concerns of what I heard in the past. The Wellness Committee was constantly saying in regards to, we need to come up with other ideas to give fresh foods to our students. This gives us an opportunity to work from there. And it is a managerial decision, and we have the money. We can try it. Person, even the person selected would probably end up in a one-year contract anyways. And if it doesn't work out, I'm sure the administration would bring it back to us in regards to, this isn't working, but it gives us a chance to try.
Bill?
Yeah, I would just like to point out, this is the last time I'll say anything.
That's okay.
Is that it took us five months, a few newspaper articles, a vote, going back and asking the community for more input, and another vote to name tennis courts where the funding was already there, and they are already open. And we've had two weeks, I believe, to look at this. I just think we need more information, more input.
Yes, sure.
Got to answer them. So you mentioned the food justice program at the high school, and the second greenhouse. So they've already brought forth the plan as part of their four-year pathway of, we're in a situation now that we need a second hoop house. Between the grant and the funds from the food service, we're able to move forward with that, because the fresh vegetables will go into our schools. So I wanted to add that as well. So we've already worked out the plan with the instructor at high school, and just the whole program within the high school, but we also hope that those fruits and vegetables are going to go into the other schools. And we have a number of students that have really been a part of growing that program, and actually, growing the fruits and vegetables. Anyway, so I just want to say, we've already, we've already have, worked out how we're going to be able to put that second greenhouse in.
Terry?
Okay, so can we go back to something I mentioned?
Yeah.
That we used to have a baker, that was, that was a position, who did everything from scratch, who looked at the federal guidelines or state guidelines, and could substitute applesauce for sugar and things like that, and made fresh things. So, but that position was eliminated. So could we, like, try it with that? That, and just could we try it with that? Because rather than give it a year if it doesn't work. And the other thing too, I just think if we could give a survey, I mean, we have a communication person on board with us, who I'm sure would help, because we haven't really used Mr. Horn's services. The school committee has it this year very much. So if we could say, could you help us get out a brochure? How can we let parents and students put something into this too? Just a little bit more time. Like I said, I agree with Sue, it's a unique idea, but it's got to fit into what we have too, I think. And I just think if we just looked at it a little bit more, that would, that would make me.
So I'm going to get to you, Mike. I just, I feel like I'm hearing two things. I feel like having the Master Chef come in front of the school committee has really kind of opened the discussion about what our current food service does. So I would like to put this into two buckets, if we could. I would like to potentially continue the conversation about the Master Chef. But I also would like to hear from food service, definitely as a food service update, but really have more of a robust conversation. Because, you know, we're hearing things from Terry about a previous baker. I know that I could, I have definitely more to say. I could say more about the food service program, things that I know are not working. I know that other people have things that they could say, you know, about the servings, and the, you know, can we spend some of that money on more food? Anyway, if we could separate them, and just focus currently on the Master Chef, while recognizing that food service needs more attention, and is going to get more attention. And I forget, sorry, forgive me, who said that we could have this, the simultaneous conversation, that we can continue to have the conversation about the Master Chef, and still, you know, you just mentioned that we're going to get the second greenhouse. We can continue the conversation about the baker. We can continue the conversation about four nuggets for a 210 La Crosse player. Like, all the things. But we still, in my opinion, time is of the essence with summer approaching. We should continue the conversation about the Master Chef. Is that reasonable? Margaret?
Yeah, and, you know, I think the idea of having a baker is wonderful, but a baker's, you know, dessert.
No, it's.
It's not, you know, and, right. You know, summer's funny. I think this is an opportunity, it's a wonderful opportunity. And there is a, there is a motion on the floor, so we need to vote on it.
Thanks.
Thank you. I just want to, what Terry said about the baker got me thinking about something different. I don't know, and I don't know the information. And I'm not against this, I'm just asking for a pause, we can get more information. I don't know the percentage of students who have allergies, whatever that might be, to what. And if that could be, because that's not a responsibility in this Master Chef, someone to make.
We have safe allergen certified or ability to obtain within 90 days.
Well, I'm more so about different meals for those students who have different allergies.
Or different options.
Yes, because right now, it's the opposite as a baker, if someone who's, has celiac or gluten-free,
Sure.
every day, it's the same thing. So my, my issue, it is not the job itself, it's just the information of what there, because, you know, that's my. that's my only thing. Just asking for a pause, and that's all I have.
So, would you, would putting an amendment into the qualifications?
I think that's where the certification is.
I feel, I feel like the same.
No.
I feel the same, that having the allergen. And I would think that management would have that conversation with candidates. Hopefully, we have candidates, people want to apply. I mean, I know that there's been chatter out there that people want to apply. But I would think that that conversation would be had by management. Like, what would you do if, you know, we had, you know, we have X number of gluten-free students? What's your option? We have X number of Catholics during the month that can't have meat on Friday. I, I'm only saying that because, you know, but, things like that. But I would think that that would be...
The serve-safe allergen certified just means that a chef understands how to deal with the blue cutting board and the, you know, how to separate allergens. It doesn't say that they're making meals for those with different allergies or different...
Sure.
I just think that...
So I think that's a conversation with management at the interview. Okay. Great. We have a motion on the table and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Two, three. Any abstaining? Okay, it passes. The conversation continues. This is not going away. I should have asked before, does the new greenhouse have a heater?
The sun, the sun.
No, but in the winter, if we're going to expand...
It's like 80 degrees in there in the winter.
It is.
That's the whole purpose of the greenhouse. And the students are learning how to grow, and then you move the food house, and then you start another, you know, process at a different time of year and, you know, so it keeps going. Like, the kids in that class beg for them to open the windows. It's hot in there.
Margaret?
I was at a meeting with people with Falmouth Farm. And the whole area in this town is doing fresh food. And I think this really helps us. And they're connected to our food program and very excited about it. And I think it's very important that we continue on with it. And I agree that the conversation continues.
Yeah, there's, there are pieces that are broken, so we should work on that. All right, moving on to acting on school choice seats for 24, 25. I don't think it needs any real introduction until we've... Did I skip one? No, I didn't.
Let's make a motion.
Oh, thanks, Mike. Take your motion. Is there a second? Okay, thank you. Any discussion?
Bill?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions about, you know, one of the things that was mentioned, I believe in our last meeting, was we were talking about like how students are chosen for the school choice seats. And there was, I know there was some comments about siblings and so forth that get priority placement. The placement of children for staff members, is that part of school choice as well? Do they get priority?
So, we have an employee that does not live in Falmouth, and they're just school choosing their students to come here. They do, but can I just also add, yes, that is true. We have never had to go to a lottery.
Okay.
So all, all students that have applied have gotten in since I've been here. And so we have never had to go to a lottery. And I've never gone to a lottery.
I think your question, yes, we, previously. Overstepping, but do you mean like, like, I work at North Falmouth Elementary. I want my child to go to North Falmouth Elementary, but you can only go there if there's room? Is that kind of...
No, I'm talking about if a teacher lives outside of the district and is working here and they want their child to come in for school choice. If there were a lottery...
They would be in the lottery.
Okay, but they wouldn't get preference.
No.
They would get part of the lottery. Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because I did notice as I was reading through the school choice, that was one of the things that we're not allowed to do, and we're not allowed to take funds for staff, students' staff's kids. I just wanted to make sure we weren't doing that, because I thought I heard it differently the last time.
It may just be because we've never had to go to a lottery that everyone gets accepted.
Yeah, and my other concern with, with school choice is the, the way the laws are written, and Mary clarified that for us last time, is that we are not allowed by law to look at a student's disciplinary record before making decisions whether or not that student is going to come into the district. Like a few other things with DESI, and the laws pertaining to, I completely disagree with that. And I think it's extremely unfair to the district, to the parents, to the students, that we don't have a say and aren't even allowed to know about the disciplinary record of a student that may have been expelled from district to district and then can come here. And I'm not coming up with any particular scenario. I'm just trying to protect our kids for potential future scenarios. And so I really struggle with that specifically in the older grades. And I know that there is some provisions in there where if they're charged with a felony, then after the fact, we can, you know, kind of make a determination as to whether or not it's safe for them to be in the district. Then we're already, we're already holding the bag at that point. We're already responsible for them, even if we make a decision that it's unsafe for them to be in the district. And as much as I want to say yes, to say we should allow as many school choices, school choice students into the district as we can, I also think that districts in general need to say and make a point and take a stand and say, no, if you want school choice in Massachusetts, then you have to give the districts a little bit of leeway to know who's coming in. And I struggle with that. So my suggestion would be to approve spots for the younger grades. But as far as Lawrence in the high school, the ages specifically where you start to get into delinquency and so forth, if we're not allowed to know what their discipline records are, or we're not allowed to know that they've been expelled from schools or anything else like that, then I say, no spots. And send a message to DESI and do whatever we got to do legally to appeal to them to change the law. And someone's got to take that stand. And that's, that's my suggestion.
Heather. Just going to advocate for some of the students that might be utilizing school choice at those older ages. First of all, what I've heard from Mary and Lori is that we have absolutely no evidence that school choice students manifest discipline issues at any higher rate than Falmouth's, Falmouth-born, Falmouth students. So there's that. And even in cases where there might be discipline issues, and that might even be the driver for school choice, I would say that every child deserves a second chance. And sometimes all it takes to turn a situation around is to get a child out of the situation they're in and into a new one. And they deserve that, that opportunity to make a go of it. And, and for us to give them that opportunity is frankly our mission as a, as a public school district.
And I would say, I, I agree for the most part with what you shared. And I'm not, the comments I'm making aren't based on any students in our district. And I know that the majority of students who want to come into Falmouth, I want to come into Falmouth because it, their family has made a decision that maybe that's the best possible way for them to get an education. And I agree that that is the absolute majority of our students that come in from school choice. I also agree that kids make mistakes and that they deserve second chances absolutely, wholeheartedly. I have also, as an SRO in a school and have worked in schools, seen where students come from out of district who have been in a lot of trouble and bring a lot of trouble into the school and make it a problem and make it an unsafe environment for students. And I just feel like as a district, yes, we want to welcome them in. Yes, we want to give people the best education. Yes, we want to give students second chances. But we should have the right to have all the information in order to make that decision. That's my problem.
Terry?
I think sometimes if you just want some data without a philosophical thing, if we look back at our history 10 years, I don't think we'll find any problems with school choice kids. So there's some data. I may be wrong, but I, I think we, I think, I can't remember any issues.
And I think even beyond that, I want to just be cognizant that we are talking about children, not seats, not numbers. And we are getting dangerously close to perpetuating this idea that kids from Falmouth are better than kids from elsewhere. And that is not how I want our kids from other places to feel. And even if that is not our intention, that is the message, and that's not accurate. I'm very uncomfortable with even having this lengthy of a conversation. It seems absurd to me to put these types of restrictions on it. I understand if we, if someone wants to make a statement to the powers that be, then, then there are avenues to make that. This is not that avenue.
Margaret?
I was at a family meeting with a grandmother and a mother who had a grandson, son here, and he was in junior high. And this was his birth school. He was a special needs student. He had never found a home, ever found a place where he was welcomed. He had friends, and he could succeed. And so they were so grateful, not that he was a problem, but the schools were a problem. And he found a home here. And so I just want to start off that. If we say no to junior high and high school, the Falmouth school, it's not going to change DESI. It sounds like blowing in the wind. If we have a teacher or staff person who has a son or a daughter in junior high or high school, and we did this, we'd be not allowing them here. And the other thing is, there may have been one problem, but we do not have problems. I've heard in the community, people concerned about safety. And I think it is unfair of us to continue a idea that our schools are not safe. Our schools are very safe. If you go around the state and look at other schools, you have reason to be concerned. And we should be so grateful how our children are in an environment, by and large, that they're really well taken care of, well saved, and get a good education. And I think children in our school system are so fortunate. Other people who I know in academia say they can't believe what we have here.
I would just like to clarify, I'm not saying that other students in other districts aren't as good as Falmouth students, or that any students are better than any other students. I'm just saying statewide that districts should be able to have the, all the information they need to make the best decision they can to protect their students and to invite the best students in. And I would just caution you that, yes, I believe we have great schools, and I believe we have safe schools. But don't ever let your guard down. That's, that's all I'm saying. I just feel like statewide, schools should have the right to be able to exchange information so that they can make the best decisions to protect their students.
That sounds like a great conversation for our folks in Boston. All right. Anyone else? Excellent. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the table. All those in favor for the school choice seats for 24, 25?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Okay, moving on to acting on the 25, 26 school calendar. Is there a motion on the table?
I will motion for 24, 25.
25, sorry, 25.
Because I'm on the wrong line, I'm sorry. I'm going way too fast. I'm sorry, I was on you.
That's okay. I'm like, what?
No, they're too close for me, too close.
I'm older than you in our heart, this time. Is there a second? Thank you, Terry. Some discussion?
I just have a quick question. I can't remember if you already said it, but we always give the draft calendar to the unionists. I mean, they may wait. Oh, yeah, yeah. Just making sure.
Thank you, Kelly, for asking. Anyone else?
Heather?
Yeah, I've, since my question at the last meeting, talked with a number of people and been giving a lot of thought. And I would, would like to ask that our calendar subcommittee, which exists, has been relatively inactive. We have a DEIB advisory that's very active. And would like to suggest that moving forward, maybe those two groups could talk to each other about ways that we can look at making adjustments in our calendar to make sure that we are being as inclusive and as culturally responsible as we can possibly be. There's been guidance from DESI as recently as January of this year encouraging districts to do this. And so I think it would just be a great way in moving forward to really look at our, our calendar year and how we support all of our students in Falmouth.
Great. Conversation, super. All those in favor of the calendar?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Great. Update on the superintendent, no, that's a lie. Update on superintendent's subative evaluation process. Thank you, Kelly. I don't think that it even worked.
Okay. All right, so here is the quick overview from the, I think this one is from the DESI guidance of where we are in the cycle. We start at self-assessment with the superintendent, set goals, implement the plan, then the formative assessment, which happened maybe a month and a half ago, a month or so ago. And now we're in the summative. So in terms of background, the summative is each school committee member preparing an end-of-cycle evaluation of the superintendent. We each do our own, that assesses the superintendent's progress on the goals, the ones that we set at the start of the year, performance on each of the standards that were identified at the start of the year, and then an overall rating. And to do that, we each make our own based on the evidence in the Google Drive, which is ongoing. That's that document that Lori periodically shares with us that has 8 million hyperlinks. So you can go to the goal...
Kelly, before you go on, the, the standards, can you go back?
Sure.
Back one slide. Okay, so it says, standards that were chosen at the beginning of, identified at the beginning of the year?
Yes, so if you, I'll skip all the way through to show you what I mean.
So that means that in each category, we cannot use those other standards?
Correct. So the evaluation subcommittee met at the start of the year and are following the guidance more closely in terms of which standards we're using. So this is the actual, I jumped ahead, so I'll go back in a second, but I just want to answer your question. So you can see the yellow is highlighted up at the top. This is a standard. And then under the standard, there's one item that we're going to be evaluating the superintendent on. It's data-informed decision-making. And these were all aligned at the start, at the very start of the school year. Lori picked her goals and identified which standards we would be focusing on. So this was all part of the, the evaluation subcommittee's work in conjunction with Dr. Horne.
It's, it's a lot different than it's always been. We have never done focus indicators. And I think it's great because it's a lot less, you know, work and everything. It just, it, when I looked at that page, I said, there's only one thing there. And it just was kind of a shock to me.
Yeah, which is why when you look at this, this is the Google Drive document, when you look at these, you don't see every single standard, every single indicator listed. So this is the, this is the support document that we've been using all year. You don't see every single one. You only see the focus indicators, because that's what we're working from this year.
We agreed to that change? Don't you, doesn't the whole committee have to agree to that change? I don't remember. Maybe we did. It just, like I said, it shocked me to see nothing but one, one indicator.
Yeah, because it definitely looks very different than in years past where... And the other thing that's a little bit more shocking too is like, I deleted all the stuff that we don't need from the document to just make it more simple when we look at it.
I also want to back up to last year, that we had, as I'm sure you remember, we had typos in there. We had things that weren't relevant. We, well, we... We were looking at it purposefully last year. I remember you and I, Terry, making a comment that we have to fix this.
Yeah. Because it was page eight of seven.
It was... I know. Then go back to page one. And so this all came out to try to be a lot more purposeful and aligning to what we're actually doing and not commenting on things that don't really contribute to us.
Right. So it's sort of that idea of going deeper, not wider. So instead of having this superficial analysis of all these 8 million categories on a very shallow level, instead, it's very deep in the things that we have selected. Okay, let me go all the way back because I skipped a whole mess of stuff. Okay. So to make... To do your evaluation, you use the Google Drive document that I just skipped through with all the colors. Lori will give a report at our April 8 meeting that will have additional information that you can use to support your evaluation. And then if you find that there are pieces that you're missing, the goal is you start early enough so that you can follow up with Lori and ask for that information before you actually try to complete your document. Then all of us take... We take all of those pieces, and then they're combined into one document. And that is the superintendent's evaluation. So I just wanted to walk through what it actually looks like. This is the first page. The most important piece is to do this page last. I don't know why they even put it at the front.
It's so annoying.
It's so stupid. So, but I'm going to... You'll have this in your pack. I'll also email it to you. And the other piece to not worry about is this up here because Sharon is so kind, and she prints them all out. And we sign them in person when we get here. So don't worry about trying to get your signature into a Word document because that'll just make you crazy. Okay. Under all of the goals, you'll see how it's highlighted, yellow up at the top. These are the goals, the first piece that we're evaluating on. And then I went and put in each of the goals that Lori picked at the start of the year with the evaluation subcommittee. They're already typed in there. So the first one is maintain a focus on academic excellence while improving the Clipper experience for all students. And in the document that I sent you, if you click on that, it will take you directly to that document where all of the data lives. So all the evidence is living in that Google Drive file. You can click on it and go right into there and see all of the different pieces that have happened all year related to... I'm trying to make it easy. It's a hard thing.
But you know, I clicked on it and looked at it, and it's fabulous. It's like the sticky notes, Mary, that she used. It is fabulous. You just go boom, there it is.
We have come a long way. You're right. It's been a long road to get here.
That's because you're good on it.
And other dumb things. All the check boxes are actually now big enough that you can check them. They used to be like this big.
I know, but never aligned.
Yeah, so in all of these boxes in the document that you have, if you double-click in it, it'll say, "Check my box, uncheck my box." So you can just use that to make it work. Same thing for here. You just highlight it. It'll take you to the place. Okay. This is the document that it'll take you to. It'll go right to goal one, right to goal two. You can see all of the evidence. Are we all all right so far? Should I pause?
Yeah, keep going.
Next, on standards. So very similar. The... I deleted all the extra... So if you go into the DESI document... Yeah. Because there's one out, and there's nothing hurtful. If you go into the DESI document, you're going to see like a whole page of indicators.
There's usually about six of them in each category.
We're only doing the ones that we picked at the start of the year that Lori's been focused on all year. If you click on the little purple highlighted thing in there, it will take you right to the rubric that explains this is proficient.
It works. I did that one, too.
I'm glad you were...
You know she's watching.
I know. Have to send it to her. It'll take you right to that rubric so that you don't have to guess at what you're filling in. And then you just go through the same process. This is standard one. You'll do this... Oh, here's the rubric. This is what it looks like. So it'll take you right to this document that says exemplary means that the administrator leads administrative teams in identifying, using multiple sources of evidence, blah, blah, blah. You can't read that. It's way too small. I don't even know why I put it on there. And then it'll go through the next one, the next standard, which is management and operations. You can see there's two in this one. Same thing for family and community engagement. There's three in this one. And then professional culture, there's two. So you're just going to click through and fill in all the other pieces. You'll notice that at the bottom, there's a comments section. And I'm going to address that in a second, but I'm just pointing it out. And then once you've done all those steps, you go back to the beginning, and this is the summary page. So you go and look at all of the goals and how you evaluated. And then you fill in professional practice, the goal for student learning. You fill in whichever boxes are appropriate. And then you do the same thing to summarize the standards ones that you've already done. So this is really the summary page. It's just first, which is stupid. If I had been smart, I would have moved it to the end.
Why don't I even say that?
And think of it.
That's okay. This is still... This is too much.
So in the timeline, April 8 is the date that Lori will share her review of her progress on her goals. April 28 is the deadline to submit the evaluation by email to me. Then after that, you'll have a chance to meet with Lori and talk about your evaluation. And if there was something in it that you forgot or she gave you an additional piece of information or you have some conversation that changes your evaluation, we built in this window that you can then make an amendment. So May 3 is the last day to send any revision. So if you have... You sit down with Lori, and you change your mind on something, make an edit, and then send me the new one by May 3. I already mentioned that I'm the designee this year, so I'll be compiling it. Chris is taking them after. I have him to double-check all of my work. And the summative is based on the preponderance of individual ratings. So what the evaluation subcommittee tried to do then was tease out what that actually means. Oh, I should have mentioned. Then the summative goes to the superintendent, and then we go on it in public. But...
Did you find out what preponderance meant?
So we are charged with figuring out what it means for ourselves. So what we decided is these pieces right here, comments, the second below and the third. Comments on the individual evaluations must be relevant to the goals, action steps, and benchmarks as listed in this document. And if you click on that, it'll take you to the document. As described in the guidance from DESI, any rating of unsatisfactory can only be given when performance has not significantly improved following a rating of needs improvement or is consistently below the standard. And ratings that do not follow that guidance will be weighted less. Oh, and I forgot this one. Ratings in any category other than proficient must be accompanied or justified by a comment that explains it. So proficient is sort of the standard, you know, not needing improvement and not exemplary. If you're going to put anything other than proficient, a comment has to accompany it. So if Lori was extraordinarily skilled at whatever... Management and operations, and you want to give her an exemplary, you have to put a comment that explains why. And the same is true if you do an unsatisfactory or needs improvement. You have to then also put a comment that explains it. And anytime those comments are in there or anytime those ratings are given and not justified, they'll be weighted less than the ones that have followed the process because we think that if people are following the structure set out by DESI, that should matter. And if you're not following the structure set out by DESI, then we have to discount that in some fashion.
Terry?
Well, I looked at that. And I think there's a mistake in the... Every... In the beginning of it, it says ratings in any category. If you look at the document, it says overall. You only are required to give an explanation if it's the overall category. So I'm... I feel uncomfortable about that weighted thing because the document doesn't really say that you have to unless it's the overall category. I mean, I looked at it, and it says. And overall's in capital letters. So, I mean, anybody should want to make a comment. But if they don't... I mean, it's a lot of work to do in this. And if they don't make in the individual ones, I think you should just leave them alone.
So what... So as the evaluation subcommittee, we really felt like we had to set some structure for how we were going to create that summative document. In the past, it's been, let's just follow the guidance from DESI. But we never really had rules written out like, do this if this happens, do this when this happens, follow this structure. And what it ended up doing is creates a lot of issues during the summative compilation. And what we were trying to do when we met in our subcommittee last was set out the guidelines in advance when there's no personalities, no numbers, no ratings, no evaluations tied to it. And just make a set of rules that we can follow.
But then you really shouldn't say that's DESI's rule. You should just say that's our rule.
Okay, that's fair.
That would make it fine because it doesn't say that. And the other thing is, if I want to say something that's not in these, like, I mean, I think one thing I've noticed lately is Lori is in everything. She's at music, she's at sports. I mean, she's, you know... Where can I say that?
Well, I think that's family and community engagement, so I don't think you'd have any trouble mentioning that.
That's not how I see that. But anyway, okay. But you can't say things that aren't on there because I don't think that belongs there. I just think it belongs in being part of the overall district thing. Can I say something like that on there?
Not if it's not tied to a goal and action step or evidence.
Okay. Well, I just said it.
Thank you, too. Bye.
If I could ask a clarifying question. What is the weighted system? Is there a formula for the weight?
We didn't create... We talked about like having it count half. But then we were like, well, that's not really fair because, you know, that seems like it's discounting it too much. So we just decided it would have to be weighted. We couldn't come up with an agreement for any mathematical degree. But just that... So if you had... Look, I think the example, I don't know if it was you, somebody said, that if you have one person that rates proficient and one person that rates exemplary, but the exemplary person didn't put a comment, when you average those together, you would come up with proficient. Instead of leaning towards the one that is exemplary, you would have to lean toward the other one because it would be weighted just a smidge more. Does that make sense?
No, it doesn't at all.
So we're encouraging... Because you... If you say anything other than proficient, you have to give a comment.
I understand that.
In the past, we've had committee members give an exemplary and not give a comment why.
Oh, I understand all that. My question is just on the weight.
So if you're not following the rules, you don't get the same weight, essentially, is what it comes down to. So we're encouraging people to please stick to the rules of DESI by anything other than proficient. Please have a comment to back it up.
Just define the weight better. The weight's not defined very well.
Well, because we can't... It can't be exact math because you're not allowed to average. You know, it has to be preponderance.
Yes. It sounds arbitrary.
You're not allowed to...
It sounds arbitrary.
It's better than it was, but it still has some...
Just to play devil's advocate here, one person looks at all of these and then weights them based on however the formula is for them that particular day. There's like nobody knows the formula of how the things are being weighted, which I have an issue with. I don't have an issue with the weighted system itself. I have an issue with the definition of how it's being weighted. Like, we have no idea. And then just a point, this just...
Well, no, but the weighting only comes into play if you haven't provided a comment, right?
Right. If you don't follow the rules, your thing doesn't get... Your input is... Your input is rated...
It's valued less.
It's valued less.
But if one person does one sentence, and one person does three paragraphs, is that weighted the same? I see a head shaking.
Well, essentially, yes, because it's following the... It's following the rules.
Yeah. As long as they're both following the rules.
If you're getting everything you need to get into your one sentence, maybe you're just not as wordy as three paragraphs.
So we're not getting into weighting the quality of the comments.
No, no.
Just follow the rules. That's all.
Just follow the rules.
That's all. Margaret?
As long as the comments are related to...
Right. Yes.
I mean, if the comments are not related at all...
They can't be related, don't you?
Right.
And the whole notion of weighting was about, otherwise you come to numbers. Okay, so, you know, you want to find a way to do preponderance. And that's the way to do it is somehow, you know, find a way to weight so that you can not do...
Just put a sentence in about what we're talking about.
I know. And that's the... I mean, that is... If we had better direction from DESI...
Which we've already evidenced.
Which we don't.
That they are not.
The fact that they say specifically that you can't create the summative by taking the average of all the scores. They say that point blank. So that therefore means we can't say, okay, well, if you didn't include a comment, yours counts half as much as mine, and now I average them because I can't do that.
We can't do that.
It has to be based on the preponderance of evidence. And that's the only guidance we get.
It's obnoxious.
So even though this lays out much more specific rules to follow, so there's not as much guesswork, there still remains some guesswork.
Right.
Which is a very unsatisfying answer, especially for me because I would rather just assign numbers to everything.
And it's not about the opinion of the person doing the collection. It's literally just based on, in years past, we've had people clicking unsatisfactory or...
Yeah.
Sorry, it's been a long day. Anything other than proficient, people have clicked on with either no one-sentence or three-paragraph as to why, or one-sentence or three-paragraph talking about Chris's red shoes. So it has to be in alignment. You have to just follow the rules.
But just quickly to your point.
Sure.
I believe Terry mentioned Lori going to all the bands and concerts and stuff. Now, the person who's compiling it, if they see that sentence and decide that does not fit into the standards like Margaret just said, would that then be a commentless rating? You see? So...
I know. I can tell you where to put it.
No, 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 no. I'm asking Melissa if I could do a check if I could.
It's a fair question.
It's a fair question.
I mean, and that's...
It's a great question. That's why I'm here.
And I feel like, you know, as somebody who has compiled the data in the past, who has compiled the data in the past, I know that, like, I've cast a wide net on, you know, what, when, you know, you think about it and you're like, well, yeah, I suppose, you know, the nonverbal communication of Chris's red shoes, yeah, we can totally put that in there. I, I say that jokingly, but I, I feel like there's a lot of grace and forgiveness when compiling.
I think so too. And I also think that with a simplified, you know, like, we're, everybody at the table who has done this once before, like, the idea of thinking about having to write comments is very overwhelming because it was in the context of the previous format of the evaluation. And we have so narrowed our focus this year into very specific items that it should be so much easier to not only evaluate those things, but also to make the necessary comments because you're not trying to evaluate on 35 different pieces. You're only targeting the things that we have selected in the working on all year.
And then just for clarification, if I could, Melissa, the comments are for each individual line or?
Let me go back and see.
Because, and I'm confused because I think Teri had said that the DESI form says recommended for any overall rating or required for any overall rating. But this thing is saying that it's for every single, which I'm fine with. I just want to make sure.
Yeah, so, look, yours is probably really small. But if you look up here, so like for this, for professional culture. If you were to rate exemplary on this, you would need to put a comment in this little box down here. Or if you picked needs improvement for communication, you would need to put a little comment in.
But that's counterintuitive to what the paper says.
Yeah, you should have taken that off too.
So that's what's confusing me.
Wait, show, tell me again.
It says in the bottom, comments or analysis recommended for any overall rating, so any overall rating, but required for overall ratings of E and I or U.
Yeah.
I shortened that to save time. But that does not mean the top ones. I'm fine with, I just don't understand.
So we just need a word change from overall to any.
Okay.
So for every single one?
For any rating.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. So I, I sent this out to you, but I can definitely fix it. And I can also update the PowerPoint that we're looking at so that when you go back and look at it, I'm, I'm assuming that the evaluation subcommittee, because this was the intent.
Yeah, yeah.
You're okay with this?
Yeah.
Okay. That was the intent. So I will just make this reflect.
I don't want to be.
No, I just wanted, seriously, I was not being rude. I was just trying to address Teri's question. On 2A environment develops and executes effective plans and procedures, routines, and operational systems to address a full range of safety, health, emotional, and social needs. I want to put that in the, the R's.
But that's your interpretation. See, I'm allowed to have some interpretations of my own. I mean.
Well, no, you just said, where would you put it?
All right, let's not get into them.
No, I know. This isn't really when you should be doing it, but.
Okay.
I mean.
That, oh.
I will make those fixes and I'll send it out to everybody. But I just want to highlight a couple really important pieces. One I already mentioned, the checkboxes. You can just click in the Word document. You click right in there, it'll check them for you. If you were going to print this out and handwrite it, I need it before the deadline because I have to then key in everything. So please don't send me a print, a handwritten evaluation in the 11th hour and then make me stay up late because I get cranked. No, you are not. Nope. Send the word back to you.
This is a negative comment, but it has a good ending.
I love a good back ended comment, Teri.
Google Docs prints out and acts differently by different word processors. It absolutely does. Remember, Melissa? So.
Yes.
It skews things.
It does skew things.
There's no getting around.
No, but that's really helpful information because I made this in.
Remember, we had to call you.
Yes, because I did mine in Word and someone. All right, so I will also, in the update that I. No, it's mine. I'd rather fix it now than fix it later. So I will also send a PDF that you can print. And I will also send it in a Google, what's it called? Doc?
I totally forgot what that. The PV, like, it was different when it was, things were printed.
Yeah, like, the whole page of mine was missing the comments. All right, I will fix all those things.
So you're gonna fix the any to?
All.
Overall.
Overall to any.
Overall.
Overall to any. And then PDF.
A Google doc.
And Word.
And I'm gonna fix the PowerPoint to actually reflect the directions. And then the last piece is that everything is public information. So just keep that in mind.
How did you?
There you go.
Will we have another? Will this come before us again? Just talking about the summative evaluation?
No.
Okay.
But yeah, I mean, just reach out if, if you need help, for sure.
Anyone?
I beat you up, but I have to say, I can tell you guys did a lot of work.
We really tried.
I can tell it.
We really did try.
I mean, you really did a lot of work, so thank you.
And it, this is not, as you saw the very first slide, you know, it is a circular process. And we will, we've tried a lot of things in the past and dumped some of them and kept some of them. And we will just keep at it until it's a really good.
You really did do a good job working on it. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Please, Susan. Since a lot around the table this evening have had their negative comments, I'd like to have my negative comment.
All right.
In future preparation for agenda items, I'd really appreciate if we take into consideration that for probably the past hour now, we've been working on something that is school committee business matters that does not require the administrators to be sitting here a couple of extra hours. So if we were able to separate that on the agenda, these people could go get some rest for the day tomorrow, working for our kids. So just a consideration in the future, please.
I like that as well. I think that was the intent when we put it at the end of the agenda.
I guess we're not understanding each other, so.
Dr. Dorr, superintendent update.
Yes, thank you. Some really good news. Governor Healy has an advisory council for youth. And I would like to announce that Eleanor Rosenthal, 11th grade student at Falmouth High School, was selected. It was an application process. There were only four students selected on all of KATE and one of our high school students. She is extremely excited. She's already got to meet Governor Healy. And over the next two years, she will get to spend time with her. So very excited.
Can we have her come sometime and tell us about it?
Great idea. Yeah, absolutely.
Governor Healy?
How about Eleanor Beattie? If she's available.
Yeah. So I just want to give a shout out to her because I think it's a huge accomplishment and, you know, for a student to be on among 60 students across the state.
Great.
So I want to give a shout out to Dawn Drew. So as we're talking about going green, and I love how, you know, it becomes just, it just permeates throughout everything we do. Carpet that's gonna go into the baby room at Lawrence School is recycled plastic, from plastic bottles. And so I'm gonna pass this around because it feels and looks like carpet. But, you know, one more way Falmouth Public Schools is going green. So, yeah. Today, as an update, Chris Horne did a training with the administrative staff today. Today, our conversations were on how to communicate about difficult topics. Great Jahe gave us a lot of information, put us in groups. We did activities. So how do you, you know, actually write letters out? So I think it was very helpful. And I, you know, hope we don't ever have to write one. But we have, I think, some skills now that when, when those topics come up, that we might do a little bit better at communicating the topics, anticipating, and I think that's part of it, is anticipating what those topics might be and then being able to communicate. So that was the last training for the year from, from Chris. So we covered quite a bit with him over the year. And my last update that I'd like to give is pretty exciting news. You have heard me over the last couple of years talk about increasing CTE programs. And we have an opportunity. You've heard me talk about nursing as being one of them. And we have met with the Community Health Center. And we've talked about opportunities to partner. We will be able to begin in the fall of next year to be able to offer opportunities for our juniors that can do a two-year coursework and internship at the Community Health Center and be able to walk away with their certification in the medical assisting. So we're really excited. This is a little bit different than we had originally when we talked over the years about this, that we, you know, four, four-year pathways, which then requires that, you know, we have teachers and we have to develop a, you know, an exam room in the classroom. So we like the idea that we're shifting a little bit about having, definitely having four-year pathways, but also opportunities that students can walk away with some certifications in their junior and senior year and walk. So in this way, it really doesn't matter if it's a, you know, two students or 20 students that sign up for this because we're not having to take resources, teaching resources and other dollars to actually build the program. So we're really excited that, that we're gonna be able to move forward with this. So that's, that's exciting. I am gonna also give a shout out to the Community Health Center. They have, they're extremely helpful and to try to explain how this might go. But their internships are also paid internships for our students. So it's, I know, that's how, that's what we, so Dr. Harris, Dr. Teller and I, you know, when we met with Karen Gardner, which is the CEO of the Community Health Center and their inter-director, when, you know, it's just incredibly really laying out what this can look like and help us to understand with a, you know, comprehensive school, how we can offer opportunities for our students. So we're excited about that. And along with that, we are looking at the four Cs. The Cape Community College Aviation Mechanical Technology Program. And so our counselors visited the Cape, had a tour and information about it. Our counselors are very excited, excited about it. We will be the first. They want to do a pilot program in Falmouth. Again, this would be an opportunity where our juniors and seniors can sign up and in two years, walk away with a certification. They will do online coursework. And then they would be at the airport actually working on the planes in Plymouth one day a month. And in two years, they can have a certification. Again, doesn't matter if we have two students or we have 20 students. We don't have to build the program in our school. This is really, I think, unique and creative ways to be able, when we say opportunities for all students, we're bringing more opportunities for our students and trying to meet the, you know, the, you know, I guess I can say needs, but really the interest and the choices and the, and the desire. So when the counselors started talking to students, there's already been 20 students that have raised their hand and say, I'm very interested in the program.
And the aviation or the nursing?
Aviation. We haven't gotten started on the nursing yet. But we, which I think, you know, it's just, it's great. We will be the only school on the KATE to move, to have the aviation program.
What better place to have a pilot program than an airport?
So, yeah, so, so more, more to come. We're in the early stages of both of them and building, you know, out and, and building that partnership. I'm hoping that, you know, we will be able to see through both of them. But I wanted to let you know, early on, these are early discussions, but it, you know, it looks like we're gonna be able to offer these opportunities. So, very excited. And I'm gonna end on that note, that exciting note.
Excellent. Mike.
Dr. Dorr, good job. I had, I know that I work with the Ryans here somewhere. He's back there doing a good job. I, with television production stuff, there are certification programs that I am confident that any one of Ryan's students could take the test and get certified. But I just wanted to say that both the pilot and the nursing thing are fantastic. So thank you for that.
That's great. All right, moving on to routine business. To approve the minutes of March 12, 2024. Is there a motion? Thank you, Mike. Is there a second? Thank you, Kelly. Any discussion on the minutes of March 12?
Minor, I don't know if I misspoke, but it was the pep band, not the jazz band that went to the tournament.
Oh, yeah.
We've got to get into her jazz band. I may have said the wrong thing. I don't know.
I think they become a pep band.
Whoever they are, they're a pep band. But it was actually.
It was just a typo. It's a pep band. It's not the jazz band.
No, I, she said, yeah.
I probably did.
All right. So I don't know if I'm correcting. With that one edit, anything else? Okay, cool. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstention? Perfection. Thank you all. Committee member reports.
Hello.
I'll go again. First of all, I just want to say, like, we've had a lot of, like, disagreements and different opinions tonight and still cracking jokes. So I don't know. Feeling good about the group. But I want to end on a, a high note because it was the FEF Gala, it was the FEF liaison. I reached out to Ellen Hewitt to see if we had any metrics of success. She's, and so I'll read here. The revenue amounts are still being calculated since the final expenses are still being determined. But we do know that the fundraising goal for ticket sales and the wine and scratch ticket raffles surpassed our goal. Also, the fundraising goal for the silent auction was met. And the event was sold out with 225 attendees. Among those were 43 Falmouth Public Schools teachers. And that is the highest amount of teacher attendees in several years. That was a major goal for the gala for this year. So they're really pleased with that. It was a wonderful evening. We had both of our state representatives in attendance. I saw Chris there and Ellen let me know. She appreciated having, school committee representation is there, there as well. So it was a fabulous evening. And it sounds like it was very successful for FEF,